Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Glen County Mainland Planning Commission, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, Tuesday meeting. Let's start off with our invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come this evening to tell you thank you for all of the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, God, for life and for a reasonable portion of health and strength. We give you thanks, oh God, for the blessings that you bestowed upon our community. And we ask, oh God, that as we come together tonight to discuss the business in this forum, we ask, oh God, for your leadership. We pray that you, O Creator, have some wisdom, knowledge, so that we can make the right decisions. And we'll be careful to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. It seems like a month since we've done this. It seems like a long time ago, doesn't it? Good gracious, it just, I don't know why it took so long to get here this time. All right, one thing that I have to do, a little bit of housekeeping. I have to read our meeting procedures, so everybody knows what we can do and what we can't do, as far as commissioners and the public. So, the meeting procedures are this. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make the presentation's own request and to address any conditions for factual findings with which they do not agree. The public portion hearings, public comments will, on public hearings, hearing items, will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relative, relevant information regarding your position and should avoid repetit, uh, being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the allotted time. The applicant then may provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. All right, planning and zoning, do we have any new additions or information we need?
Yes, good eve, good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf Plannings, running director. I wanted to introduce you to our new senior planner who joined us this week. This is Christina Wright, and she joins us from Florida, so this is our, our day two on the job. So you'll start seeing her in the coming months, presenting to you all, in addition to Chris and me. So we're happy to have her onboard.
Thank you. Nice to have you. All right. I don't think we have anything else to discuss. What we need to talk about now is we need to approve the minutes of the Mainland Planning Commission meeting held on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Commissioners?
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, I got a motion. I need a second. All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, we getting into the public hearing portion of this, two point one, S P dash twenty-five dash five dash eight ninety-one and ten sixty-one Perry Lane Road site plan. Consider the site plan approval for the placement of two office trailers, one on each lot located at eight ninety-one and ten sixty-one Perry Lane Road. Parcel zero three dash one zero seven nine four and zero three dash one zero seven nine five. All right, eight ninety-one Perry Lane Road is on basic residential, I mean, basic industrial, I'm sorry, there's a big difference, and planned development, and, and planned development district. G C dash zero four dash six nine. And ten sixty-one Perry Lane Road is on basic industrial. Austin Chalmers, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for J and T Georgia Holdings, LLC. All right, Ms. Stephanie.
Great, thank you. So this is an existing over fifty acre property that's an asphalt plant. And so what they're looking to do is to add two office trailers for use by the existing business. So, one trailer is one thousand forty-six square feet and the other is one thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. And these are the two parcels where the trailers would be located. This is off of Perry Lane Road. And this is their site plan. So being such a large parcel, the two office trailers really won't be probably too visible at all from the road. There's an existing driveway and the two trailers are here, and then the other ones on this property. They do have parking that's allocated, as well as ADA spaces. And they are requesting a modification to their buffer along Perry Lane Road. And the Mainland Planning Commission has the authority to modify buffers during the site plan process. And so that's what they are asking. There's an existing natural buffer of pine trees along there. So instead of removing those, to plant a type E buffer for the requirements, they are requesting to continue to use that natural buffer that's on the property. So this is just kind of a zoomed in, showing you where, you know, where this would be. And these are your possible motions, and if you are inclined to approve this, adding in that modification to the buffer requirements, if you're okay with you using that natural buffer instead of planting the type E. And Mr. Chalmers from Robert Civil Engineering is here for this application. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, we have an agent.
Good evening, Commissioners. Austin Chalmers of Robert Civil Engineering. Ms. Leaf did a much better job than I ever could presenting this project. So I just request that this motion is approved as presented, and I'm here for any questions that you all may have.
Okay, Sir. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Mr. Chalmers? Okay, you must have done a great job. All right, Commissioners, I think we need to have a public hearing. All right, anyone that would like to step forward to speak in opposition of this item, S P dash twenty-five dash five? All right, hearing none, seeing none, anyone that would like to step forward and speak in favor of S P dash twenty-five dash five? Hearing none, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve S P dash two-five dash five with modification to the buffer requirements as presented.
A second?
Okay, I have a first and a second. Commissioners, all in favor? Vote is seven, zero. All right, we gonna move right on to two point two, which is Z M dash twenty-five dash seven, two thirty-one De Prater Lane, and adjoining parcel rezone. Consideration of an amendment to an existing planned development district, Z M twenty-three five zero, for approximately twenty-three point four acres. Property is located on two thirty-one De Prater Lane, parcel zero three dash zero dash one zero seven eight nine, and an adjoining parcel to the west, parcel zero three zero seven three six four. The purpose is to extend the P D district to the two subject parcels with amended language regarding roadways. Develop standards and uses, development standards and uses. Thomason Hutton, Agent for D R Horton Incorporated. I don't know why I was having such a hard time on that, Mr. Carey.
All right, let's go.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Carey, Glen Cat, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have an application of a zoning amendment, and I'll try and explain it as best as I can. Here are the two subject properties, Zero McKenzie Drive and two thirty-one De Prater. Here's a zoning exhibit showing the existing zoning. So we have the Covington Point P D, Z M twenty-three five zero, which these two parcels in question, De Prater and McKenzie, will be added to and modified. The existing zonings on the De Prater tract is Z M two thousand seven twenty-two, and for the McKenzie tract, it is Z M two thousand six thirty-five. So again, the two parcels being added to the Z M two thousand twenty-three fifty are being modified to meet these standards as outlined. There will be a reduction in the setback from seven to five, with a five-foot corner yard as well. An increase in density from three point six to eight point seven units per upland acre. The roads will be private, however, they will still retain public water and sewer. There is a proposed three-year build-out, removal of multifamily residential units from the zoning text, smaller lot size of four thousand square foot lots from the current six thousand square foot lot, removal of private childcare center as an allowed use, removal of the entire section of conditional uses, capped maximum units of one hundred seventy-one. The previous, which I'll explain as well, was four hundred and ninety, and a forty-foot minimum lot width. So, both tracts and their current zonings are allowed ten units per upland acre, or two, ten units per acre. They both have a maximum height of fifty feet. The McKenzie tract has a maximum of ninety-nine units, and the, the Prater tract has a maximum of sixty-five units. However, the P D of Z M twenty-three fifty has a maximum of four hundred and ninety. So that's where you see that four hundred and ninety number come from.
Wait a minute now, wait, wait, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why would we consider that four ninety? I don't understand how that would apply. That's a whole different tract of land than what we're discussing.
That is correct, but these two units are being absorbed into that P D. So that's why I would have to mention that.
Yes, sir.
So as these two developments were existing in their current zoning, they had a maximum of one hundred and sixty-four units. The current proposed maximum would be seven more units at one hundred seventy-one units. However, the multifamily language has been removed, so it'll all be single-family lots, or townhomes. The proposed exhibits show a total of one hundred and twenty-five units. So there are, there are two approved preliminary plats. The preliminary plat for McKenzie, and the proposed layout exhibit would equal one hundred and twenty-five units. Here is the planned development text, as outlined. And here is the layout exhibit for McKenzie. I would also state that this layout right here for this realignment is a moving project with the county as well. And here are the development standards that are right here, just blown up. And these are your possible motions. I do have Trevor Peters here, on behalf of the property owner, and that is all from staff.
I got a question for you. On one of the earlier slides, you said that they were eliminating the, uh, not multifamily, but townhomes?
Townhomes are just, the language for townhome stays, the multifamily language was removed.
Okay, because I, I thought that said that it was being eliminated from, because I know they're already on McKenzie. They're, they're, they're going, they're not going vertical, but they've got all the infrastructure being put in right now for the townhomes. So, and I noticed on the zoning text, they did say it, G R requirements on it.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm clear.
All right, any additional questions, Commissioners?
So you mentioned that the road is a moving project. Does that mean it's not decided on, or it is moving?
Oh, it is moving. It's, yes, it's, it's supposed to break ground here soon.
Commissioners?
And that moving of the road, wasn't it worked out that the road will continue past the schools? You're, you're talking about McKenzie?
Correct, so it would be a realignment to that it would continue all the way up to three forty-one?
Yeah, so you don't have to come back the way you came, you can, yeah.
Correct.
That's good.
Any additional questions, Commissioners?
I have a, I guess maybe a question for you, or either legal. I'm just curious, when was the last time that we had a development that had this small of truly single-family lots? That was?
We, uh, there was, there's a subdivision at the end of the spur called Tate's Landing. They're forty-foot wide lots out there also, and they do have reduced setbacks as well.
Not townhome, single-family?
Correct, correct. There's a, and I've seen a lot of their clients come to us. They want the same thing, because people don't want a big lot. They want something small. And you can get a, hopefully, a more affordable home.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good thing. I was just curious whether we had, uh, I didn't, I don't know how that P D text is, of the one you're referencing, but I just didn't remember us doing one that small in the recent.
Called for the Northwest Quadrant up there at exit forty-two, and it went all the way down to the spur, all the way up to the new school site, back in there.
Right, right.
And it had those standards or requirements in it as well.
All right, any additional questions from Mr. Carey? Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Yes, sir.
All right, can I get an agent to step forward, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Trevor Peters. I'm project manager with Thomason Hutton. I'm representing the landowner, D R Horton, in this P D rezoning amendment, P D zoning amendment request. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and I hope you approve this amendment.
I got a quick question, and it really, it's not, it's more of a market thing, I guess. And it seems like everybody's wanting to go to smaller lots, I guess, the market that they're all seeing, and that's, people don't want to live in a townhome.
That, that is correct. It seems like that's a trend. Although some of those smaller lots, like you mentioned earlier, have been in P Ds for quite a while, right? So I mean, you look at the Northwest Quadrant P D, which was approved quite a long time ago. The Altama Track P D, which was approved quite a long time ago. All of them had provisions in it for forty-foot minimum lot widths, depending on whether it was a traditional neighborhood, or it was a neo-traditional neighborhood, so. But I do see a trend lately that that type or style of lot is, is on the rage.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions from Mr. Peters?
Doing it that way, this is just a novel question, but doing it that way allows ten feet between the homes, correct? Between where the, in, so I guess service access isn't interrupted. There's not an issue for future service issues or fence installments, et cetera. You just place the air condit, air handlers and all, I'm assuming, in the back of the properties?
Correct, yes, sir.
Just lose the sides open between?
Yes, sir.
So access isn't restricted?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Peters, I think that's all the questions we have for you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of the Z M dash twenty-five dash seven. If I could have anyone that would like to speak in opposition, please come forward. You got five minutes to tell us your grievances. All right, hearing none, seeing none, could I get anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Z M dash twenty-five dash seven? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing portion. All right, Commissioners? We need to make a move.
I move to recommend approval of Z M twenty-five dash seven as presented.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All Commissioners in favor? Seven, zero. All right, we'll move right along to two point three, Z M dash two-five dash four, seven seventy-five, eight fifty, and eight, and seven eighty-five Harrieger's Boulevard rezone. Consideration of an amendment to an existing planned development district, Z M forty-six eighty, for approximately a hundred and four acres. Property is located at seven seventy-five, eight fifty, and seven eighty-five Harrieger's Boulevard, parcel zero three dash five, oh, one, five seven three nine, zero three dash two eight six five seven, and zero three dash two eight six five six. Proposed, propose is to reduce the yard, the side yard setback on a lot's less than a quarter acre. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for D R Horton Inc., D R Horton Incorporated, Southern Land Partners, LLC, and Long Twenty Twenty Four Partners, LLC. All right, Ms. Leaf?
All right, so this is a, similar to the last request in terms of the discussion about this side setbacks and reduced setbacks. So this particular project is about, is probably over, over a hundred acres total, three different parcels. And currently, the setbacks for all-size lots, the side yard setbacks, are seven feet. And so what they would like to do is for all the lots that are less than a quarter acre, so less than ten thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet, these lots would be able to go to a five-foot side yard setback instead of the seven. They are not reducing the lot size, they're not changing density. The only change is to reduce the setbacks on the side for these particular lots. And just for informational purposes, these are all the different parcels. So there's three different parcels that are highlighted in the blue. So, and this is phase one, that comes off of Harrieger's. And phase one, there's a, currently a pending final plat for this phase that's slated for the Board of Commissioners' agenda next week. And they are showing seventy-seven lots, majority of the lots are about six thousand square feet, or a little bit over. There's a few lots that are larger, but the majority are kind of right at that six thousand square feet. And so, so I believe all, probably all the lots, and I might be speaking out of turn. There might be a couple that are more than ten thousand square feet. But I think the majority of the lots would have that five-foot setback if this, if this is changed. And then these two other parcels that are also part of this change are the future phases. And so this image does show the different phases they are planning for the project. So it does touch Harrieger's in two different locations. Again, this spot is this phase one, and then they'd be building up through here. Just kind of zoomed in to get a closer look at, at this, and this is their master plan. So the applicant today did submit some elevations to kind of give you a little better visual for what the, what the units may look like with the current seven-foot setback versus the five-foot. So on the left-hand side, if this amendment does go through, this is the five-foot side yard, and this would be an example of a single-family one-story. So this would enable them to have a two-car garage in this example versus keeping the current seven-foot. This design would have the one-car garage. And then these are examples on the left with the five-foot setback of a two-story house. And then on the right is the existing seven-foot setback for a two-story house. And these are your possible motions. And Jake Lemmings is here from Robert Civil Engineering to represent this application. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf?
Yes, I do have a question there. Ms. Leaf, I know you mentioned that the majority of the lots in phase one would be affected by this change.
Yes, sir.
What about phase two and three? Do you know approximately how many lots would be, you know, affected by this?
I, I don't know yet. We haven't seen all of those phases come through the subdivision process, but Mr. Lemmings may have a, a better idea of that, and may, may be able to share that with you.
Did, did I see right on the slide, one or two back, that the minimum lot width was also sixty feet? Does that not to be, need to be changed too?
Oh, for the lot width? But that's not what's on tonight, though? Okay, so I think, yeah, Ms. Lemmings saying that, that was actually part of a, a previous amendment to this P D. So I think is that part of this, this Z M forty-six eighty, was that? Okay, oh, oh, two thousand and one. Okay, so you're saying it was two thousand and one? Are you referring to this slide then, about the, the width?
Yeah, the less than quarter acre, sixty-foot minimum width.
Oh, sixty-foot minimum, okay. So we just need to, that needs to be amended to ship? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I noticed in the, in the close-up, I mean, there's some, I don't know how. Yeah, I, I noticed in the, in the close-up, I mean, there's some, I don't know how, how, how wide they get, but I know there's some fifty-foot and things like that, I, I'm just curious.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to take a look at that, because we, I mean, we, we noticed, yeah, for this application, we noticed, just for the reduction of the side yard, not a lot of lot width, so we might have to look into that, and maybe Mr. Lemmings can talk a little bit more about what's been done already then. Yeah, so I think my question is, is this just an error on this, in the, in the amendment that can be changed, or is actually something that needs to be amended? Yeah, he'll, he'll speak to that a little, little more and hopefully explain that.
All right, Commissioners, any additional questions from Ms. Leaf? All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lemmings, talk to us.
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, so to answer the question there regarding the, the sixty-foot, so it is, this, back in two thousand and one, and I have the approved PD here, so ultimately, that's just a snippet of what we submitted, but this is the, the full packet, which, so the first page shows the, ultimately, it, it would be online as well for y'all's, y'all's packet, but shows what we're suggesting, or what we're requesting here, by the three different parcel numbers, the five-foot setback, and then this is the, the page that shows what you see on your screen here, and then if you continue in the, in the packet back in, and here's the stamped approval when it was approved in two thousand and one, from the county, but there's a, two thousand and one, it was approved for a fifty-foot lot size, so there's already active fifty-foot lots, so we're not asking for any, anything regarding the sixty to fifty, this is already an active fifty-foot is approved, and in this entire PD here, so we're just asking to go to a five-foot side yard setback.
So the table just wasn't updated?
That's right, that, that specific table does not state the fifty, that's, that's an older version before the two thousand and one table, yeah.
Thank you.
And then, in regards to, as, as Stephanie said, so the only thing we're, we're asking for is to go from a, a seven-foot side yard to a five-foot side yard, densities staying the same, and then to answer your question about the number of lots, this, which would be primarily, according to D.R. Horton, I talked to them yesterday, and then again this morning, but primarily for phase one, but there would be some homes within phase two and three, and obviously, depending on how the homes sell within phase one, they may continue along that same path, so it just kind of depends on how the product is doing, but just going back, ultimately, the, the reason they're asking this is primarily, really the only reason, is to be able to have a two-car garage, so it, it really doesn't affect anything at all with the lots that are going through the, the final plating process right now. It just, it gives them the option to go with their forty-foot wide option with their fifty-foot wide lots, to do a two-car garage on these particular units here, which they feel is a better product for the, for the, the community and the folks they're trying to sell to.
Okay, Commissioners, any additional questions from Mr. Lemmings?
Just out of curiosity, do you know what the, I guess, the business argument was back in two thousand and one, when they were reduced to fifty feet?
So, that was done by Landmark, and since then, D.R. Horton has come in and purchased it, so I, I know they came in and acquired the fifty, the lots with the plan fully constructed, D.R. Horton wasn't the one to actually pay for the design to do all of this, they came in and purchased the design, but I, I don't know what, what the conversations were back in, in two thousand and twenty-one about it.
Could you go back to the screen that shows the two-story?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to see the difference between the seven and the five there.
It, it's ultimately just the, the, the width of the, so both of these have two-car garage here, but it eats more into the home, so it, it gives them the porch and a different look at the home here. Adds that extra width. And as was said before, this, we're working on the project that, that Mr. Neville brought up as well, and, you know, the Northwest Quadrant PD, which is the huge PD on the west side of, of ninety-five, and the northern portion of Glen County, it does have the forty-foot wide lots, which were fifty here, and that allows for the, actually, it's a, in the PD, it's written a two-foot wide side yard, but it has to have a ten, a, a five-foot, well, it has to have a ten-foot separation between, between homes, so pretty much a five-foot side yard setback, which is what we're asking for here.
All right, Commissioners, any additional questions?
Are these designs they already have, that they built before?
Yes, that's right.
And what's the height limit in that PD text?
Probably thirty-five feet. It's fifty-six pages, so bear with me, I don't know where it is. You mind if I find it while we?
Sure.
Okay, I'll find it and I'll report back to you. Any other questions while I'm looking that up?
Mr. Lemmings, go ahead, y'all go.
I'm, I'm just curious why this is, this is square footage driven, not lot width driven?
It, it is, it is lot width driven, so ultimately, right now, the, so the fifty-foot wide lots that they would be, that they have right now, you'd be having a fifty plus the, the seven-foot, so that gives you, let's see, what are they, what are they doing right now? So you are with the fifty-foot, ultimately, they need to pick up four more feet to be able to fit these footprints in on a fifty-foot wide lot. So that's, that's what they're trying to do here, is pick up those extra four feet.
But, but the amendment is, is square footage driven, le- less than a quarter acre, right? It does, it doesn't specify lot width. As long as you're a quarter acre or under, you're going to five-foot setbacks.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, that's correct.
So, I mean, some of those lots are fifty-two, fifty-four, and they're still going with the five-foot setback?
Yeah, so, so ultimately, they're, we're trying to get a five-foot side yard setback for, I make sure I say this right.
Ten thousand square foot lot is a pretty decent sized lot.
Right, so, I mean, what, what we're seeking is to have a five-foot setback on fifty-foot wide lots.
Is, is it? So you're going to maintain the seven-foot setbacks on anything that's over fifty-foot?
The amendment is, is anything under a quarter acre, right? It does, doesn't, it's, it's, that's what I mean, it's, it's square footage driven, not width driven. Is that, is that right?
It's written, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess the way it's, yeah, so less than ten thousand square feet would be a, in our lots, or,
I mean, some, some of these.
Or five thousand square feet roughly, so yeah, it's, it's, on here, it's, it is, yeah, so it's, what, a quarter acre? So that gives you a ten thousand square foot lot, is that right?
But some of these, I mean, you could have a, I don't know what the lot widths on all these are, but you could have a fifty-four foot lot and still have, go down to a five-foot setback.
That, that is, yeah, that is correct.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions, Mr. Neville? All right, thank you, Mr. Lemmings. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of ZM dash twenty-five dash four, seven seventy-five, eight fifty, and seven eighty-five Harrieger's Boulevard rezon. Could I get anyone to, like to speak in opposition to this, to step forward, please, you have five minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Cornell Osborne, I, I don't know if the term in opposition is the right term for this, but I am, I am new to this process.
Mr. Oz?
Oz, Osborne.
Would you please spell your last name for us?
O-S-B-O-R-N-E.
Would you give us your Glen, your current Glen County address?
One-two-zero Fantel Court.
Thank you very much, sir.
Shell Point.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so my concern is, living in Shell Point, how these setbacks might affect property values of existing communities or neighborhoods subdivisions? And when I came, I thought if there's a rule, seven-foot setback, then that's a rule, and why would that rule be changed? And allow someone to change that to a five-foot setback? Like I say, I'm new to the process here, and from what I'm gathering, that's, that's being done, so it's not like a, something that's unusual especially, but, so it's my concerns, how would it affect the property value and why seven-foot rather than, or five-feet, rather than the seven, standard seven-feet? If that makes any sense.
It, it does make sense, sir. And if that's all you have, I'll have either the agent or our Glen County staff step forward and answer that question after we get all the folks that would like to speak in opposition.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your Glen County current address, and you have five minutes, sir.
My name's Walton Cheston, I live at one eighteen Shell Point Drive. I might be doing this in the wrong place, just some things I'd like y'all to know. That company tore the sidewalk up out there in October. It's set for three months before they touch, you have kids riding up and down that road every day going to school. They poured some of the sidewalk back, it still got about that much of a drop-off where the road is going in there. And a couple other things, before y'all let people build out there, you letting them build retention ponds, run into a ditch and don't drain. The little subdivision right above that one, it, it washed out so bad, the county had to go out there and put sandbags around their pipes. Every ditch on that end of Harrieger's does not drain. And one thing for y'all to please think about, do simple math, you add a thousand houses out there, one and a half cars, that's seven hundred and fifty cars. You got two schools out there that do not have a turning lane either way. Something for to think about, the safety of the kids. And also, when you go down Harrieger's, it goes uphill. The further you go that way, the higher it gets, so it can drain back to the canal, but it's not draining nowhere, the sidewalks are washed out out there, the new ones they just put in a couple of years ago. And it's just something to think about. The road, I asked Mr. Wayne Deals, my county commissioner, I asked him, I said, do y'all have any plans to do something to the road? Not in the next five years? I don't know about y'all, but that's a little backwards. To me, you adding to the problem. I'd like to see people come in our county, I love this county, I grew up in Camden County, I moved up here fourteen years ago. But I think we need to address some of the problems, you know? The guy told me, he said, well, the retention ponds, they got it graded going back, right? That's good, that's a politician answer. What good is it to have something right if it don't drain? I mean, that, that's the answer the man gave me. Well, they got their thing right, I understand, it goes nowhere. I mean, just something for y'all to think about, you know, when y'all making these decisions. And one thing I'd like to see in this county is the impact figure. You got people coming here building, and they say, well, they just pass it on to the consumers. I got news for you, you already passing it on to us that pay taxes. So let people stand up and, you know, pay their fair share. A lot of roads, a lot of drainage need to be done in this county, and it's going to grow. This county's grown a lot in fourteen years. It's just something for y'all to think about, I know y'all got the main issues up there, but there are a lot of hidden issues out there, like the ditches, the road, no turning lanes at two schools. I mean, that's pretty backwards. If you're going down Harrieger's at the wrong time, you get hung up in the traffic, because they know, they not enough room for the cars to pull in, you get stuck in traffic. But thank y'all for the time, and I appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. I, I, I would like to say one thing, tell me your name one more time, sir. Your name?
Walton Cheston.
Chest? Okay. Yes, sir. I don't, and I'm not trying to defend Glen County, but I don't know one county agency anywhere that I've ever been associated with that does anything in advance. They always do it when they absolutely have to, there's no alternative. They not going to spend any money to, to, to do what's necessary until they absolutely have to. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just telling you that's the way it happens. Um, we, we, we knew, we knew, we knew twenty-five years ago, eventually, something like Buc-E's would come to exit forty-two, and the county and the state is spending money there now because they absolutely have to. They, they just not going to do it before it happens. It, it seems like it would be a lot easier for county agents, uh, agencies to do that, to, 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 to do pre-planning and try to figure out, but it, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to figure out, because we knew eventually something, you know, all my lifetime, we felt like something eventually would come to exit forty-two, and it has now. And like I said, now the county and the state's trying to react to what we knew was going to come there for years and years and years. But I, I just wanted to make that point to you, sir. Yes, sir, I, I, I feel your pain, and I certainly think we should have better, better, I'm not saying our planning department, but I think we should have a better outlook on what's going to come, our community is going to grow exponentially, quickly. So, thank you very much, sir, you have a great day, and we certainly appreciate you coming and, and expressing your opinion to us. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have anyone else that would like to step forward in opposition? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, do we have anybody that would like to step forward and speak in favor of ZM dash twenty-five dash seven? Oh, I'm sorry, ZM twenty-five dash four, I apologize. That, that zoning is ZM dash twenty-five dash four. All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the public hearing, Mr. Lemmings?
I think we have it figured out, so the, the issue was, and the, what was shown on the screen was, wasn't there on my part? We, we had it shown as the old PD, ultimately, this is the, this is the, it's still the same PD, but this was the amendment that was done in two thousand and twenty-one, that shows the fifty-foot wide lots, and ultimately, this is what we'd like to amend, to do a, a minimum side yard of, of five feet with these requirements here, with also writing in the, this is subject to, make sure I'm saying this right, this is subject to the lots being one-fourth acre or less.
Okay, did that answer our questions?
Yeah, yeah, less than a quarter of acre, I guess, to, to say that right.
All right, any further questions from Mr. Lemmings?
Yeah, can you just restate what you're asking for?
Yes, so I'm asking for approval for these three parcels to have these requirements here, but on D, to have a, a five-foot side yard setback, with that being only allowed for lots that are a quarter of an acre or less.
So even if you do have a seventy-foot frontage, you want to? So even if you do have a seventy-foot frontage, you want a five-foot?
They, they, yeah, they don't have, well, that's just the quarter acre or less because that was what was written into the original PD. They're not putting lot sizes that large in there anyways. They'll be, uh, most of them are all around the six thousand square foot lot size, even for, you know, phases two and three. So we could get smaller than that if we needed to. Um, but that just, we're just trying to make it a little bit easier.
Just your drawings that you showed were ba- based on if you have a fifty-foot lot.
Right.
Then you need five-foot setbacks to do two-car garages.
Right.
So if you had a sixty-foot lot, you don't need five-foot.
That, that's, that's correct.
And you don't think any of them are gonna be greater than sixty feet wide or greater?
Uh, from what we have planned right now, no. But I didn't wanna limit them on future development or future phases, just in case the market changed.
Okay. Did you find out the height?
Yes, thirty-five feet.
I just, um, I just wanna say this because, uh, you know, um, there was a lot of arguments made in our community that substandard lots were a bad thing and that we did a substan- we didn't, but the county did a substandard lot ordinance that restricted height, um, due to water runoff and that, that water between residents couldn't happen. If you have townhomes, you don't have that issue, right? The, but there's not a gap of roof water coming down. So what, what does the developer do different to deal with that issue? Or do you not think that's an issue is my question?
So typically in all single family, just to prevent runoff to other sites, you know, they say if they gutter the homes, there's different lot grading options that we can do, just depending on where the ponds are located. Um, if the ponds are behind the home, you know, obviously the home is typically at the, the peak of the lot, but we usually provide like low-flow wells on the lot lines. Um, to be able to divert the water back toward the, the road or, or toward the pond, say if something's in the rear of the property.
So is that a design requirement, engineering requirement, or goodness of their heart, they'll hopefully do that?
It's in our, it's in our construction plans, just to make sure we're not running water from one lot to the next, just to make su- so ultimately it comes down to the contractor doing it per the plans that we've designed.
Typically, Commissioner New, we try to make our water run to the streets because that's where all the curbing gutters at. And that's where all the infrastructure to take the water to the retention ponds. There are some times when it runs away from the street, but it's not very often. So that is something that is done. And we, we have to do that, um, to get rid of the water, to get the water, ultimately to get the water to the retention pond, you have to make it run downhill.
Right.
And, and, and yes, ma'am, to answer your question, now that is left up to the, um, uh, the contractor, the developer. And I don't, I don't recall seeing any issues, I mean, we live in flat land, okay? And, um, I don't recall any new, um, subdivisions that I've been in that have had those issues like you're concerned about. Obviously, if the developer's gonna spend millions of dollars to do it, the last thing he wants is water standing in people's yards for.
Right.
But it is, it, it could be an issue and I don't think there's a great big requirement for it not to happen.
I will say when we get, when we get also just a lot tighter and say you can't fit the grades in there, um, I mean, you can, you can obviously pipe the, um, the gutters and have bubblers at the street. So that's something too, that it's more expensive. So they try not to do that, just handle the grading, but it's an option.
And the whole, the whole subdivision be curbed and guttered?
It is. This one is.
I don't, I, I, I guess I'm not, I shouldn't say that. Uh, I get that to have a product that you can continue to sell and you don't need a neighborhood with problems. But fifteen years from now, if I own one of these homes and I decide I wanna go to setback to setback thirty-five feet high, it's gonna be problematic. So the less setback we have could in the future be problematic. And, and, um, I just, you know, have that recollection of substandard lots discussions that have gone on for years and years and years. Granted, they're in old neighborhoods that aren't curved and guttered and don't have retention ponds. But, you know, the argument is you have less land for the water to absorb in and we're, we're, we're creating that new here. But I will trust that they will do it right and get the water going in the right direction.
In, in every community, when these, um, big national builders come in, this is, this is the issue that comes up. So it's gonna come before us a lot more because there's a lot of them coming to Brunswick. And, um, I, I necessarily don't agree, I mean, I don't think it should be reduced, but it is what it is. And, um, you know, it's, the, the good thing about it, it's not being done to people that are, we're talking about a brand-new subdivision. So when you sell them the house, you can tell them you only got five-foot setbacks. It's not like it's really gonna affect the people next door, the, the, the next neighborhood. This is really not gonna be an issue for the neighborhood down the street. It's gonna be self-contained in their neighborhood.
Right. Less their water runs to their backdoor neighbors.
There's a lot, I gotta, I have a very good feeling, I have a very good feeling with the little bit of building knowledge I have, with all I hear about these national builders coming to town, I think we fixing to have a lot of changes. Things that we're not accustomed to, they'll be asking for.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that, I guess, we're on the same page for the neighbor's sake and, and the people that buy the homes, that there is a solid implementation of the engineering plans.
And I will add the, not specifically talking to the, the grading on the lots, but the amount of ponds on the site, I believe there are five ponds total that will be on the, on this property. And so we're actually overdesigned for the ultimate pre versus post, um, of the site as well. Uh, but just wanted to add that as well.
Yeah, and one other thing, and then, and Commissioner New, you already know this. Our children don't want the same thing that we have. My son doesn't want an eighty-five acre, he wouldn't have it. Okay, it's too much upkeep. They don't wanna live on a, they don't wanna live on a half-acre lot. They wanna, they want five-foot, seven-foot, set, you know, setbacks on the sides. They want about two swipes with a lawnmower. And they want about a twenty, twenty-five foot on the front so they can park their Range Rover out front. If they can get the Range Rover out front, they're perfectly happy. And that's who, that's, the market, D R Horton is not doing this out of the clear blue. That is their market.
No, I, 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 I agree and, and, and we see it every day and the affordability issue of bigger lots. And I'm usually up here yelling about private property rights and we need affordable housing, but, um, we talk about water a lot.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. I, I, I agree a hundred percent. And people, you know, D R Horton's response to this would be, this is the way to make affordable housing. Well, no one can ever tell me how much an affordable house costs. Okay? I think that people, when they talk about affordable housing, are really talking about free housing. That's just in my mind. But it's, you know, th- these are o- obviously not free. But what's affordable now? Three hundred thousand dollars in Glen County?
Well, he could tell you, you can just take the median income and he could tell you what they can fall five foot.
I've got one right now. She's a unique situation, but there's six children. And it's a D R Horton home specifically because of the price point. And, uh, you can house a family of eight for three forty-one.
Yes, sir.
New constructions. Everything is being discussed as live today.
Right in your wheelhouse. All right, that's all I have. Mr. Lemmons, I'm, 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 go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've got one more. The, back to the elevations, the, um, will this neighborhood just be like one or two different floor plans? That's just the same thing?
Didn't, no, this was just an example of two, two, uh, one, one-story home and another two-story home. But it's gonna be, I'm guessing, similar-sized homes, but the visual will change. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I still have a, I still have an issue with the square footage, uh, of the lot as opposed to the width of the lot. I mean, some of these, some of them are bigger than a quarter acre, so they wouldn't apply. But some of these, some of these that are less than a quarter acre are decent-sized lots. I just don't see going down to five-foot setbacks on some of these larger lots.
Well, they're not going back to five feet on the larger lots.
If it's, if it's less than a quarter acre. Right?
Well, if it's. If we're, so most of, the lots in here are six thousand square foot lots. For the, for the most part, that's the lot size that they're, they're gonna be aiming for. Um, just to be able to get the density that they wanna get, which is less than that a quarter acre. Um, so the lot size between six thousand, I'm understanding you're right, the lot size between six thousand and that ten, roughly ten thousand square feet, that's what we're asking for, is that five-foot?
I mean, even, even a, even a six thousand square foot lot, that's a, that's not a substandard lot. Um, with seven-foot setbacks. We build on them, design on them all the time.
It's more of the, it's the width, um, that we're trying to, trying to make sure, so.
Well, that, that's, that's exactly where I'm going. You know, if, you know, if a lot is less than whatever square feet, then the setback can go to se- to five feet. But I don't know, it's just, it's just a little. I mean, i- and, I mean, I'm an architect, so this is up my wheelhouse. But if, if a, if a certain design doesn't fit on a lot, you change a design. I mean, you don't change the setbacks. That's just, uh, my take on it. I mean, if, if forty-foot lots, I understand, go to five-foot setbacks. But some of these are, are decent-sized lots. I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the need, I guess, is what I'm.
And, and I don't, so my understanding, they have footprints that they use on their properties and we're.
Well, I'm, and that, that's exactly, exactly my point. There, we, I don't think, I don't think we need to make decisions based on something they already have and wanna reuse. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. Uh, and, and I guess to answer your question, yeah, the larger the lot size, I, I would guess they would not be coming in here and doing, say, a five-foot side yard on all of them if they're a larger lot size than at that point.
But they can, but, but they can.
They, they could, um.
I mean, even, if, if you build, if you build one of these houses, um, on a, one of these larger lots, there's nothing that says an owner can't do an addition to take it out to that five-foot setback in the future, even though they don't build it originally. So it, it's still setting a precedent that I don't think is, is real good. Ma- that's my opinion.
Understood.
All right, commissioners, anything else from Mr. Lemmons? Thank you. All right, let's have some discussion, commissioners.
Um, I'm, I was just gonna make a comment, uh, Missy, you were concerned about drainage and all that. And looking at the preliminary plat on this, looks like a majority of the lots back up to either retention pond or wetland, which is lower on that. And, uh, something we've seen in, in our business, uh, we've actually flown LIDAR on subdivisions that had got developed because the developer wanted to make sure that they had enough pad and drainage between the, uh, lots as well, also prior to construction. So they're, they're, they're taking better care of what they used to do out here, I mean, Glen Haven, that sort of thing, so, but, uh.
All right, commissioners, we need some discussion and a motion.
So just for clarity, all we're voting on is that lots that are smaller than a quarter acre can have a five-foot side yard setback. That's it?
Correct.
Yes, and, um, and Mr. Chair, if I, if I will, if the, if the commission is inclined to approve it, um, as Mr. Lemmings pointed out, um, under section three C, three D is where it still said seven feet. And this PD, it was changed somewhere else in the PD, but it wasn't changed everywhere. So if you are inclined to approve it, I would recommend, um, that you add the condition that the PD is revised to, to change that section to five feet for lots less than a quarter acre so that it is, there's no conflict with where it's changed in the other section.
And I guess just for a hundred percent clarity, this change only will apply to these parcels?
Yes, that's correct. Just those parcels.
Until the future ones come before us.
Yeah.
Will you give us our cheater slide?
Yes. And actually, that, that is a, a good point. I think just to be safe, if you are gonna add the condition about, um, changing it in section three, um, to also add in those same parcel numbers like they did in the other section, um, just. Just to be safe.
No, we're changing it for the, this, but she's trying to, well, I, that it doesn't change it for all of Harry Driggers Boulevard that falls under that same PD text.
Okay.
I'm on, I'm gonna take a stab, okay? As you can tell. All right, uh, I move to recommend approval of Z M dash twenty-five dash four. And in addition, that the seven-foot setbacks, right, are changed in whatever sections of the PD text impact, um, this project and that this reduction in setbacks only applies to the parcel numbers we are dealing with, which is zero-three dash one-five-seven-three-nine, zero-three dash two-eight-six-five-seven, and zero-three-two-eight-six-five-six, and no other parcels. That's the move.
I think that covers it.
Can you work with that, Ms. Leaf?
I, I can. Are we, are we good? Yes.
I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Again, seven, uh, seven to one, okay. We have a, we have a six to one vote. Six in favor, one opposed. All right, uh, two point four on the, um, agenda is T A dash two-four dash one, county-initiated tax amendment, consideration of a county-initiated amendment to the Glen County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to change references from community development director and community development department to planning and zoning director and planning and zoning department. And for other purposes.
Uh, so I'll, I'll introduce this, but since this does involve my position, uh, if there's any specific questions, if I can have the county attorney's office, um, address those. Uh, so the county commission did meet a couple of weeks ago in a work session. Uh, one of the items was to, um, review these changes to the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to reflect a recent reorganization, um, at the county regarding the community development department, where we rezoned to planning and zoning department and the building department. And so they did a discussion initiation of this, of this agenda, or of these changes. Uh, so this will have public hearing before the MPC, the IPC, and the board of commissioners, um, before it can be finally adopted.
All right, Mr. Munford, you got anything you'd like to add to that?
No, sir. Um, other than this did come before y'all, uh, a month or, a month or two ago. So this is the same one y'all have already approved. But we're now going back through the process now that the board commissioners has discussed it at a work session, but it's the exact same amendment that you've already adopted and had a public hearing on, but we're doing it again tonight.
All right. We need a motion.
Uh, actually, if you can hold a public hearing.
Oh, we gotta hold a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I, I stand corrected. All right, any- All right, anyone that would like to speak in opposition of T A dash twenty-four dash one, please step forward. Hearing none, seeing none, uh anyone that would like to speak in favor of T A dash two-four dash one, please step forward. All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're closing the public hearing, commissioners.
Let's make Aaron stay and change it to zoning and planning, just kidding. I'm happy to make the motion, I move to recommend approval of T A dash twenty-four dash one as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I got a motion and a second, all commissioners in favor, the vote is seven, zero. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Show move.